Thank you very much.
We will now call to order our June the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one School Board Works Session of the Lynchburg City School Board. And time certainly moves fast when you are doing a great work. And so for our June Work Session tonight, as we call our meeting to order, we would appreciate that the public would recognize that your viewing and listening is very important to us, and we will seek to move through our business tonight in the most thoughtful and productive way possible. Having said that, I would like to move us to Section B one, which is our Agenda Approval. And Board Members, as is our usual custom, the agenda has been featured for your review, and it contains the pertinent items for us to share as we have agreed for tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the Board around approving the agenda for tonight's work session? Is there a motion?
Move that we approve the agenda for tonight.
In the move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Any further questions or discussion? We're now asking our Clerk would please call the roll.
School Board Member Evans?
Yes.
School Board Miss Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that very important moment. And tonight's work session, we have carved out a special Section C, and we would like to indulge the Board now for a few moments for a very special presentation. And after the presentations have concluded, we will then ask any Board Member at this time if they would like to make any further comments, and then we will move into Section D of our meeting and the remaining items that need to be discussed tonight, being mindful to the Board that we do have a closed meeting at the end of our discussion. At this time, the Board would like to pause, and I would like to read a resolution of commendation and appreciation to Mrs. Bell H. Evans upon her retirement as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board, presented by the Lynchburg City School Board. Mrs. Bell H. Evans, a champion crusader for public education in the city of Lynchburg, has worked diligently as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board for a total of three years. Her professional manner in dealing with people and issues earned her favor as a caring and compassionate individual who devoted herself to the service of Lynchburg City Schools. Mrs. Bell Evans has been an able spokesperson and supporter of educational causes. She has been encouraging to students and their families. Mrs. Evans, a parent and an educator herself, was knowledgeable of the challenges that many students, parents, teachers, and staff members encounter. Throughout her service, she was sensitive to the educational needs of all students and championed new and creative approaches to education. Her questions and comments demonstrated a keen understanding of the topics being discussed. With this resolution, the Lynchburg City School Board pays tribute to Mrs. Bell Evans, a person of excellence and integrity, who by effort and by example made valuable and far-reaching contributions to public education in Lynchburg, Virginia. Whereas Mrs. Bell Evans served with distinction as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board for three years, including Chair of the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, as well as the Board Representative to the Educational Foundation and E.C. Glass High School. Whereas Mrs. Evans' keen insight and foresight were qualities of leadership that were appropriate to the needs of the Lynchburg City Schools during this period of change, challenge, and growth. And whereas Mrs. Evans consistently attended school events and programs, she participated on boards and committees as a representative of the School Board, and she volunteered her time to help in all capacities throughout the school division, demonstrating her true support of LCS and all students. And whereas Mrs. Evans, while on the School Board, played a major role in the development of the Lynchburg City Schools budget, review of the School Board policies, and the appointment of LCS senior staff and school principals. Whereas Mrs. Evans' dedication to the duty during the COVID-19 pandemic contributed to the implementation of the Return to Learn Initiative, as well as mitigation policies to ensure the safety of all Lynchburg City School students and staff, be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia takes pride in the excellent service that Mrs. Bell Evans rendered to the operation and successes of the public schools of this community, and be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia hereby affirms its appreciation to Mrs. Bell H. Evans for her three years of devoted service to public education during which she demonstrated courage and tenacity in the pursuit of educational excellence. Her numerous contributions will affect generations to come. The Lynchburg City School Board wishes to commend Mrs. Bell H. Evans for the quality of leadership on behalf of the school division and its youth, and for the quality of her stewardship on behalf of the city of Lynchburg, Virginia, done this day by order of the Lynchburg City School Board, Chair James E. Coleman, Superintendent Dr. Crystal Edwards. Dr. Brennan, our Vice Chair.
Ms. Evans, mine is much shorter than that, but very sincere. This is a certificate of service for Mrs. Bell H. Evans. The Lynchburg City School Board thanks you for putting the education of students first and for making a difference in their lives. Signed, Dr. James E. Coleman, Jr. and Crystal M. Edwards, Superintendent. And we have a few little gifts from the Board for you also.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you all. I'll say something really fast.
Yes, we're going to allow School Board Member Evans to say whatever she would like to say, and then at this time, any Board Members before we move on to our next item on the agenda.
I will be fast. You know, it was a very hard decision trying to decide whether to seek free appointment for three years and three more years. And I've got a student who's going to be a senior, and my parents have moved to a nursing home this year, so it's just been a lot going on. It was time for me to step back, but I think the most interesting and best thing I learned, you know, I went to Lynchburg City Schools, I taught Lynchburg City Schools, I have children in Lynchburg City Schools, and to now be able to have spent three years behind the scenes and understand Lynchburg City Schools, I could not be more happy or pleased or proud that my older son graduated from Lynchburg City Schools and I have a senior in Lynchburg City Schools. So I think seeing every aspect of it, the fact that I still believe they are in the best place they could be should tell the community something. And I thank all of y'all. It is not easy work, and I think the pandemic year should count for about ten volunteer service. So thank each one of you. You know, a lot of y'all I would not probably have come across in my everyday life, and I'm thankful that I did. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Is there any Member of the Board or our Superintendent that would like to make a comment at this time?
Certainly. I just want to thank you for your service and commitment, the smiles that you brought at times when it was really tough, and just the way that you helped us grow and develop as a Board, as an administrative team. We couldn't ask for a better partner on the School Board. I'm going to miss you. You already know that. But we wish you well, and we know you're not going far.
I was going to say, I already have meetings set up.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm not going to say goodbye. I'm going to say we just look forward to a continued journey and work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor, and why don't we just do this, starting with Mrs. Morrison and just go around if you want to say something. Go ahead, Mrs. Morrison.
I am just so appreciative to have another Hilltopper on the Board. I truly enjoy getting to know you better these last three years, and I am so appreciative of the voice that you gave us during tough conversations and tough decisions. And you were firm, consistent, and kind. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison, Dr. Carter.
And Bell and I worked together on the, no, I just forgot the.
The work policy.
The work group, work policy group. And I think we were just a good complement. And just always look for you for the what's relevant right now with your student, with your son in school, and you knowing just how much engagement and other things that are going on and exactly how things are going. And also, you just report the facts and that you've always been upfront, and that you speak clearly and you speak positively to what's going on. And I just appreciate that from you, and I'll miss you on the policy group. And you're always willing to send out those helpful hints on.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
I also want to thank Mrs. Evans for being a fellow District One Representative. It's been a great, great partnership, and you've done such a great job, Bell, representing all schools. And as a parent, you've been such a great supporter of E.C. Glass High School, as well as all the schools for, in Lynchburg City Schools. And as a Board Member and as an educator, you've been such a great support for the staff, particularly for the teachers, which I think has meant so much to everyone. You did a great job as the Chair of the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee with developing our legislative agenda, our breakfast with the, with the, with the City Council, going to the meetings. Thank you so much for doing all that. I think the main thing I'm going to miss, though, is just your enthusiasm and your willingness to state your opinion. I think, as they said in the resolution, you have courage and tenacity. Some people would say you tell it like it is, which I think is awesome. And I'm going to miss you very much. I look forward to continuing our friendship in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan, Dr. Nellis.
Yes, Ms. Evans and I had a very interesting start to our relationship. Anybody that knows Bell knows she is very upfront and will let you know how she feels. And we had nowhere to go but up after that.
Right.
And it actually was, it actually turned out to be pretty funny. But I do appreciate her, your honesty and forthrightness and candor. And if anything, in the nation today, we need some honest, open discussion, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Fine.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Dr. Senha.
Yeah, Bell, I'm sorry to see you go, but I do understand how difficult a decision it is, having faced it last year myself. I too appreciate that you showed courage in some of your opinions and statements and provided us with valuable perspectives that may not have been brought to our attention were it not for you. So that was extremely valuable input. I've appreciated that you are a practicing teacher with a lot of experience and that you have children in the public schools. We need more parents of currently enrolled students on this Board, in my opinion. And so I really think that was a valuable contribution that you made. I always appreciated your summaries of the policy changes that you made. That you went above and beyond in providing that to us, and that was quite a service to us as a Board. We're all busy, and you were aware of that and made good use of our time. And finally, I really appreciate all the work that you poured into our legislative advocacy. I think you brought it up a whole notch this year with your leadership. I know it was very frustrating for you at times. It probably felt like you were herding cats or speaking into a empty canyon at times, but you stuck with it, and you pulled us forward and left us with a very good, workable plan moving forward on our legislative advocacy, which will be so important to the success of the Division. So I thank you for all of those contributions, and I'm sorry to see you go.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Gupta.
I'm sorry for you, that you're leaving, but as everybody said, one word stands out for you is you're, you're straight shooter. You don't mince words. You're honest, and you're a hard worker. And Legislative and Advocacy Committee shows that. You're consistent in putting those policies together, and getting it through these nine members is not an easy task. And you handled it well with Lord of Grace. So thank you, and you'll be missed, and you're welcome to come anytime, as long as the Chair allows. and you're welcome to come anytime, as long as the Chair allows.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey.
I want to thank you for, first and foremost, being a like-minded colleague. Others have mentioned your tenacity, your honesty, your straight-shooting style. And I, for one, know that that's always because you have the students and the staff at heart, and that's what matters. And I very much appreciate the opportunity that I've had this past two years to become your friend. And I look forward to many more conversations with you in the future, and will always seek your wise advice. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And so Belle, that's the love from your board to you. Didn't want to see my father go, and I don't want to see you go. We'll miss you deeply, but we'll call upon you often. Let's give her another great big.
Thank you.
All right. Kind of feel like going home after that. Belle would want us to continue with our work. And so we will now move into Section D, Item 1, our Finance Committee. And Dr. Edwards, if you could tee us up for that.
This is actually Mr. Harvey. We on a board.
Oh, excuse me. That's right.
But I could tee up Mr. Harvey. Go ahead, Mr. Harvey.
That's right. School Board Member reports. Go right ahead, Mr. Harvey.
There is no report. Our next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is this month, but we have no additional items to add to the, to the agenda. I've spoken with Dr. Nillis. I have not yet had the opportunity to speak with, with Dr. Carter. The, the suggestion is that we cancel the meeting for this month, since there are no additional items to add to the agenda. And so with your approval of that, I would recommend that we cancel the meeting this month.
Okay. The committed members have so been advised, and thank you, Mr. Harvey, and for the work of the Finance Committee regarding that information. D2, Governor's School Committee, once again, Mr. Harvey.
No additional report, although we do have a called meeting on June 30th at 1:00 PM to adjust our schedule to match the adjustments that Lynchburg City Schools have made.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. The Governor's Regional STEM Academy, Dr. Nillis.
There's no report.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis. Law Regional School Board, Dr. Carter.
There's no report at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, Ms. Evans.
The next meeting is in July.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. And as it relates to our task force, School Board Member Susan Morrison or Dr. Gupta?
I have nothing new to report.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Likewise, Dr. Gupta. Thank you. And as it relates to Partners in Education, I did read at the last meeting a statement from Mrs. Morrison, and so I would assume that that would suffice for tonight as well. Mr. Harvey? Okay, thank you all. All right. That moves us right on through Section D. And now we're going to go into Section E, Agenda Items. And we have eight of them tonight, Board. And again, we would love your thoughts, and let us continue to be clear, concise, and coherent in those thoughts. And the first item tonight is our Governor's School, and there will be an opportunity now for Dr. Steve Smith to relate to us around diversity. Dr. Edwards, if you could kind of bring him on, please.
Absolutely. So we welcome Dr. Smith, who is the Director of our Gov. School, as we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, not only at the Gov. School, but throughout Lynchburg City Schools, and even in our community, as we look forward to uniting some of our efforts to do so. So from a student's perspective, you all know that we have an Equity Task Force. We have been working diligently to increase the diversity of students in rigorous, high-level programs throughout the division, as well as the Gov. School, not to single out the Gov. School. They are one of our programs. But when you look at our GO Center programs, and our Honors, and AP, and Advance, and Early College, and STEM, there are lots of programs for which our students have opportunities to participate. And if you remember a couple of meetings ago with Dr. Jordan, and the new Dr. Fowler had come and spoke about perceptions that kids have about participating in high-level rigor, rigorous programs, particularly these were high school students. So we have been in lots of conversations and work behind the scenes to increase the interest, interest access and support, because we know you can't just open a door and allow children to go in. You have to support them once they're, once they're there. In addition to students, we're also talking about staff and part of our Equity Task Force, and even the City Task Force looks at the diversity of our staff and the training of our staff in terms of creating an inclusive environment. And again, I would say we have combined efforts and combined challenges when it comes to looking at diversity of getting staff here, qualified staff. But the work still has to be done and go on. Research does show that children need to look up and see representation of themselves in all aspects of an educational institution, and we're working hard to do that. And then finally, curriculum, which is so timely, seeing how the VDOE had a full day workshop on the African-American history curriculum today, but also just looking at the contributions of all people in our curriculum in LCS, and I'm sure in the Gov. School as well, with the, with the focus on STEM. So we have asked Dr. Smith to just join us, as he is a, one of the programs for which we feed into. It should be noted that we are one of the schools that the Gov. School serves right here. We're happy to have him in Lynchburg. But I would like to turn it over to Dr. Smith to talk a little bit about the Gov. School and the work that you're doing with diversity.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Dr. Edwards, Dr. Coleman, members of the board and administration, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Those of you who know me know I got a little excited when I got invited, and I did a PowerPoint, and I invited some students, and yeah. And then I realized I had an appropriate redirection. I realized you have a long list of very important things to work on, and I was assuming too much about the time that you might have for this topic. But I would like to share with you that the Governor's School does serve five school divisions, and we do see the importance and understand the importance of diversity and equity of access and inclusion. And I love to hear superintendents and board members talk about challenge and support, both. You must do both. And I know that there's been considerable work in the region and in Lynchburg related to the development, encouragement, enhancement of student potential. I want to share a couple of things just briefly, and then be available for questions. What I want to share first is, good for you, LCS School Board. And specifically, when you increased your slots, you invited two more students of color to the Governor's School, and both those students have accepted. Now, I will share with you that one of them declined at first. And it was only after I spoke with parents and invited the student and the parents in for a personal tour and talked about the program that, that he accepted. And that's something to think about. So I mentioned that I had invited students. I think it was, it was Dr. Carter who mentioned in an earlier meeting, we should talk to our students, prospective students and current students. Absolutely right, Dr. Carter. Absolutely right. So I hope the board will have time to do that at some point, to hear from students about their perspectives. Again, we see the importance at the Governor's School of, of the work that needs to be done, and we want to be partners in it. So having said that, I would be glad to answer any questions from any board members, and I'll just sort of open it up to Dr. Coleman or Dr. Edwards to provide structure.
Dr. Smith, thank you so much for being with us tonight. And the floor is now open for any of our board members to ask Dr. Smith any question that you would like to ask, and he will answer to the best of his ability. All right. Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I am interested in knowing what we can do to get students better prepared to be accepted into the Governor's School. We know that we need to start earlier, and we need to do it as soon as we can. Do you have any insights that would be helpful for us?
Thank you so much for the question. First, I'd like to say you prepare your students as a group very well. The students who are selected through your process for the Governor's School are well-prepared and are incredibly successful at the Governor's School. That being said, and I know, Mrs. Morrison, that you have a long history of working with the Lynchburg City Schools and the students, and you understand some of the initiatives that have been in place in the past. I think continuing to identify students of color, students from underrepresented groups as at promise rather than at risk, and then encouraging them and supporting them and giving them access to programs earlier that will allow them to be successful in the, specifically the math course that is prerequisite to coming to the Governor's School. So the lowest, I'll use that term, the lowest math course we are able to offer with our limited staff is pre-calculus. So I believe it's still true in your math curriculum that you need to have students in GeoTrig, Advanced GeoTrig, and doing well to be qualified applicants for the Governor's School. So then the question is, how do you get a more diverse population of students into that prerequisite course? But yes, there are a number of things. I won't talk at length about them, but I'd certainly be glad to talk about some ideas that I know your CNI folks are already working on.
Thank you.
Dr. Carter.
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time for that parent and the student. Because a lot of times, that's the major thing, or that's very impactful, and also will just provide some clarity as to what's expected, and also to ease people's minds. And the other thing is, I know you were saying that Mrs. Morrison may understand some of the things, but for people that don't know, what are some of the interventions or some of the, the things that you all are doing at the Gov. School to try to have more access or to provide more just clarity, or just to let people come visit to see what's going on there?
Thank you for the question, Dr. Carter. As Mrs. Evans said, pandemic years should count for 10, right? So, so it's been difficult to reach out to students and families in the last about a year and a half. We have a number of outreach programs that start with students who participate in the Middle School Science Challenge, and so we support that, and of course, the Regional Science Fair. But we also have middle school visits and middle school days. And then when there isn't a pandemic, I go out to each of our 11 high schools personally, and I speak to any student that your guidance counselors put in front of me, and I'm delighted to do it. So I try to provide information that way. Then we also have program overview nights. So your Division Advocate, who is Maria Jaeger, Mrs. Jaeger, will send me a list of students, and I will send them a personalized letter that I will sign inviting them to come to hear more about the program. So we have a number of outreach efforts, and I'd like to talk about more that, that we could do together to try and get the information about the program and excitement about the program to a more diverse population at a younger age.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other questions? Dr. Gupta.
Dr. Smith, thank you for coming, and we appreciate you being here and presenting. My question is, what can Lynchburg City School do to collaborate with Governor's School to increase diversity of the student body as well as the faculty side, so we can work as a team to help lift that goal we have?
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, for the question. And it's a two-part question. The first part with the students. I'd be glad, I have met with Dr. Jordan and Mrs. Jaeger. Now, I met with them via Zoom, like all the meetings were happening. But we've talked about you're promoting excellence through accelerated learning, your pedal program, and what that looks like now. All my information about the pedal program would be from at least a decade ago. So we've, they've brought me up to speed on how that program is working. And there may be some ways that we at the Governor's School can help with younger students. We certainly don't have a right to have access to any prospective student's educational records. That's part of the challenge. But if they had a presentation they'd like me to do, if they had a group of students, they'd like us to provide some additional programming for, we could definitely talk about how that could work. So that would be my first answer in terms of collaboration for students, as you look at the pipeline and you look at identifying talented students at promise, and then challenging and supporting them to get them ready to be able to be successful applicants. The other part relates to the staffing, the faculty, and that's more challenging. Now, I teach statistics, and so there's something called the small-n principle, right, which says if you have a number that's less than 10, you need to be really cautious about drawing conclusions. There are seven teachers at the Governor's School, including myself. The last time I posted a position was 2017. Before that, it was 2014. And so, so it's a challenge to find qualified applicants, and specifically qualified applicants from underrepresented groups. That being said, all challenges can be addressed. And what, the Lynchburg City Schools has been a wonderful host division, and it very generously has done the postings for me when we have a posting. We don't have an HR department. So they've done the posting, and I'm excited to talk about how we could reach a wider audience for a position that we might have on the faculty. So perhaps we could identify someone who would, would apply and would be willing to come to the Governor's School who would come from an underrepresented group.
Dr. Smith, you are answering our questions very well, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Anyone else have a question? Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Smith, thank you so much for coming tonight and for helping us to address the issue of diversity in the Governor's School and our advanced programs. For those in the public who are listening who don't know, you've had a long history of Lynchburg City Schools, and you've done a wonderful job, I think for probably more than 10 years at the Governor's School, making it just a wonderful program. And you've handled the, the challenge of COVID so well this year by continuing to be able to educate the students from all different school districts. So thanks for doing that. And then a personal note, I'm sort of in the unique situation where you have, I've had children at the Governor's School, and I now have my next generation of nieces at the Governor's School, and you've worked so well with all of them, even those who have challenges and need some extra help. So thank you for all you've done for all our students at Lynchburg City Schools.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure and a blessing to work there.
Anyone else on the board like to raise a question to Dr. Smith while we have him here? All right. Then it appears that you have adequately handled all of the questions. I do thank you, Dr. Smith, for coming tonight, as you shared with me in prep meeting. There are 19 Gov. Schools in the Commonwealth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And some of the Gov. Schools are really struggling around diversity, and we are doing better than some of those that are really, really struggling. And as has been mentioned, as we continue to go forward, it does take courage to address some of these uncomfortable conversations, but I appreciate the way in which you have addressed us tonight, and I look forward, as Dr. Gupta stated, with collaborative efforts to work on all of these. I also would like it to be known that this board values the contributions verbally and in writing of any of our students. And the board would like to take the time out to applaud the three students that are here tonight, if in fact there are three, and would like them to stand if they would like to, so that we can appropriately thank them for coming and appreciate all that you're doing there in the school, if they are here. I may have misunderstood.
They are not with me this evening.
Okay, very good. But we're going to clap for them anyhow, even though they're not here, and we want you to know that. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. And I think that concludes our discussion on this matter. Thank you very much.
You are welcome, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We will now move to E2, Secondary Block Scheduling. Dr. Edwards, lead us in then.
Absolutely. So one of the things that the board has asked is that we have a group of committed professionals who are all here tonight to come and just talk a little bit more in detail about block scheduling. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pugh to introduce and tee us up.
Absolutely. Thank you, board members. And we do have some staff from the secondary level, as well as central office staff. The, the school staff that are here are Principals Tim Beatty and Rose Flora from our high schools, as well as the counseling directors from each of the high schools, Tracy Miller-Good, Serada Hester. And Matthew Mason is also here to represent principals at the secondary level for the middle schools. Dominique Foster is here from Central Office, and she's a Student Services Supervisor who oversees the Counseling Department. And they're here just to provide a little bit more information. In board docs, there was a document for you to, to read, and some articles that give some highlights and overview on the different aspects of block scheduling. So I'm going to turn it over to Rose and Tim, and they will introduce their staff.
And before we get started, Ms.
And before we get started, Mrs. Evans, I just want to, on behalf of myself and EC Glass High School, thank you for your service, and I can also attest to the tenacity, and there will be a volunteer form coming your way.
Thank you.
And good evening, everyone. On behalf of Mr. Beatty and Mr. Mason, we would like to thank you for having us here and our team here this evening to further discuss our transition to block schedule. Scheduling supports the mission and the vision of the school, and this is only possible through the efforts and expertise of our school counseling directors and their amazing teams. So we want to give our school counseling directors the bulk of the time to talk about our move to an A-B block-style format next year, and at the high school level, a 4x4 block in the 2022-2023 school year. So I would like to introduce Mrs. Tracy Miller-Good, Counseling Director at EC Glass High School, and Ms. Sarada Hester, Counseling Director at Heritage High School.
Good evening. It is great pleasure, and we want to say on behalf of both of our schools, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and your leadership. Thank you, board, for your advocacy. And from school counselors, Ms. Evans, we want to say thank you. It gives us great pleasure when you talk about the work of school counseling. And so tonight, after my gratitude, let's talk about block scheduling. And so at the secondary level, we didn't take lightly in regards to what's next, what are our needs, and it wasn't, it's pre-pandemic, that we were talking about, how do we best support students? How do we support students in what their post-secondary needs are? And also, how do we make them more workplace-ready? And also, how do we help them look at more what is their fit? And so therefore, when they leave Lynchburg City Schools, that we're not just saying that we have suited you with the diploma, but we're saying that we've made you a citizen that is well-ready to serve our community and give back to our community. And so with that, with our traditional seven-period day, did that afford all students to delve into career tech courses? Did it allow students to take electives that they might not necessarily have? Did it allow students to not have to do summer courses, such as personal finance or health, to be able to do more rigorous courses, such as AP, dual enrollment courses? And our seven-period traditional style does not afford students all the opportunities that I do talk about. So pandemic comes, and now we're dealing with where students are not as engaged. And we're dealing with, of course, as you guys have talked about in your school board meetings, what are we gonna do with our students in regards to retention and promotion and getting them back engaged, but also on fire? And so we talked about what kind of scheduling structures would do that for us, but also do that with teachers and making that connection and that engagement, which is so valuable. And so that's where we landed when we came to the 4x4 block scheduling. Why? It's because it's a 90-minute period of time where a student can't, where a teacher and student can engage, do more project-based learning, delve into a content and be able to have not such a traditional teacher-direct approach, but students can be engaged in their learning, and they can see how it fits into the real world. We also looked at, we're gonna have students who have to do, now this is pandemic I'm speaking of, we have to have students who have to have credit recovery, and we need to get our students back on track. How do you do that in a seven-period traditional structure? Well, quite honestly, we had to look outside the box and look at more of a structure such as a 4x4, where we can have credit recovery. And in this year, I'll speak specifically to the alternating block. So when we look at the alternating block, it is 90 minutes for a class, four classes a day. You're gonna have some type of transition, so it could be a little bit under 90, we're still working out the logistics, because we're just fresh off of graduation. But students will attend four classes a day, and they will have A-days and B-days. So what does that mean? Essentially, what takes place is that a student can have eight classes. This year, a student who, that eighth class is more of an advisory class, and that advisory class, for those students who did get off track, some of our brightest and our greatest, and those who just became just disengaged, they'll be able to find credit recovery. So for those students who weren't able to do summer school, who weren't able to be able to recover some courses, our schools, both at the high school level, will be able to work that in. But what about the students who didn't fail classes? What does that look like for them? That looks like some really great opportunities for our staff to do more mentoring, more coaching. Why do I bring that up? Because we did a model pilot program at Heritage, doing modeling and coaching and mentoring, and we saw very high valuable results. You guys from the board had a presentation by Dr. Fowler and Dr. Jordan, and they talked more about how each student need that touch, and how each student needs someone to connect with them. Well, our model and what we are proposing does give that touch. It does allow faculty to do what they love to do, which is connect and engage with students, and to help students see that glimmer of hope, and help them see what they can be, and then help them actualize that and realize it. So that's our little snippet of our advisory program. So each faculty member would have an advisory class period in that alternating schedule. And some of that will be focused on credit recovery, and others will be focused more on the mentoring and coaching aspect. Now, the pros is that a kid can earn up to eight credits, not all students. The eighth credit is more focused on that student who failed, that student who fell behind or off-track and desperately needs that credit to make sure that we can get them back to diploma attainment. It's fewer class changes in a single day for students. It's more, I talked about it, more in-depth instructional time with their teacher, more engagement, more connection. And after this year of, we're still pandemic, but after this year of not having students in the building, I need more of that myself. So I'm looking forward to having an advisory period myself, if that is even allowable, Mr. Beatty. But anyway, so more elective opportunities in an eight-course, in a course of a year, and more opportunities for credit recovery for us, and it allows our students and staff to have a year of professional development, because they need to be transitioned. They need to make sure that they understand what that instructional style can look like. They need to be able to meet with other divisions in order to have conversations, whether that is by Zoom and in-person, to talk about what that professional development should be and what it can be. Because right now, in our area, we have most of our area division high schools who took that on this year and will continue. And then we have some other divisions that are pretty similar to Lynchburg City Schools who have done very well with block scheduling. There are cons. There's challenges, and there are cons to everything, because number one, there's fear that is attached to change, because oftentimes, as people, we cling to what we know, because it's all that we know. But one thing that I do know is community communication, community awareness, also making sure that we have our professionals as teachers and as principals and as counselors at the forefront to talk people through to what it looks like, having our students engaged in the process, and making sure that we do continual instructional strategies and planning and be very transparent with our public. Also, we want to make sure that we create a very responsive monitoring and evaluation system to see how we're doing. Data, data, data. As counseling directors, we love data, because data speaks to the success, to the glows, to the grows, to the challenges, and to also the things that we've done well. So the wonderful part about this is, I get to speak about what this year looks like, but my wonderful partner, my partner in crime, Tracy Miller-Good, gets to talk to you about the 4x4 block in the 2022-23 year.
Thank you, Ms. Hester, for that. So we are looking at transitioning to the 4x4 block system for the 2022-2023 school year. As Ms. Hester has articulated, the pros as well as the cons in the A-B, a lot of that applies to the 4x4 block schedule as well. There are more opportunities as what we've seen with this pandemic, and then moving forward with the learning laws, there would be more opportunities for students for the credit recovery. But not only the students who need credit recovery, but also those students who need more of the social and emotional support. Teachers are able to be more creative with their project-based learning. It would also be a decrease in teacher and student fatigue with the management of classes. So instead of trying to navigate seven classes, then students will have four classes each semester, and our teachers would have three classes and then a planning period each semester. There would be smaller testing groups for SOLs and more opportunity for students to test if they need to retake an SOL that's required for graduation. We also have to look at the transferability alignment. As Ms. Hester had mentioned, some of our neighboring divisions in which students transfer, or our students transfer to them, are on a 4x4. So for students who are on a different system, it puts them at a disadvantage. They either cannot get all of their courses in, or we have to be very strategic in scheduling their classes, and with that, it could be that our students are spending time in our graduation labs through online programs such as Edgenuity. And there is an increased opportunity for students to take advanced levels of courses. There's also opportunities for students to take the world languages. As it is now, if a student does not take their first year of a world language in eighth grade, they cannot take up to the Level 5, which is our AP-level classes, in 12th grade, because we only offer the opportunity for one language per school year. Also, in regards to that, the Virginia Department of Education now requires the sequential elective for all students, regardless if they're pursuing the standard or advanced studies diploma. So with that, with the 4x4 block schedule, that provides the opportunity for students to complete their graduation requirements. There will be more opportunity for the relationship-building, because the students and teachers will be spending more time together, and there will be less opportunities for campus disruptions during class changes. So instead of having seven class changes a day, there will be about four class changes in between for students to get to or from classes. And with the cons, it's the same, is that just the creation of responsive monitoring and evaluation, and then, as Ms. Hester had also mentioned, to provide our teachers, our staff, administrators, counselors, community with more information, and provide those professional development opportunities for our community in addition to different types of focus groups and making sure that we're communicating that information. So that is all I have. Are there any questions?
All right. Well, this is a great board that we have here, and not all of us are professionals in the relationship to block scheduling, and so there may be more specific questions that board members want to raise, but if you all are completed, we would open the floor. Now, this is for discussion, board members to raise questions or concerns that you may have. Mrs. Evans?
I have a couple of questions and concerns, and positive, the sequential electives, huge help. Just having a child navigate, all of a sudden, that being part of their graduation requirement was hard. So I love that, having that extra time for that, because that is a hard one. I have two major concerns, or two just questions. Have we done any kind of survey with our teachers ongoing? Not, I'm not talking about this coming-up school year, but the permanent 4x4, that's really what these questions are directed to, not next year. Just to see, you know, are we all on board with this? Because it is a huge change in how you're teaching. So that would be my first concern for the teachers. And my second would be, say you had a student in the fall take Spanish 1, and what if the way the schedule happened to work out, they didn't get Spanish 2 until the spring of the next year? That is a long time between Spanish 1 and 2, or Algebra 1 and 2, or whatever class you're taking. So is there a way to guarantee that these classes would go back-to-back? I think that would be hard to do with the schedule, but I would greatly worry for a student to have a year in between those classes. So those are my two biggest areas. The teacher one's huge, because I just wouldn't think it's a smart thing to do, would be just to get the feedback from the teachers, since they're gonna be the ones doing this. But then, you know, the, how we schedule it, I worry about. So those are my two biggest areas of concern.
I'll address the scheduling of the classes, and we would have to be strategic in scheduling those classes, and that's one of our priorities, is to start the master schedule collection with course registrations and things like that a lot earlier, because this will be new to the division. But with, the teachers usually take some time at the beginning of each class. When a student goes from Spanish 1 to Spanish 2, even if it's in the year-long course, they still do some type of review when students go in there. However, but also with looking at, you know, these opportunities, we can take that into advisement, and like I said, we could just try to be very strategic and intentional when we're scheduling students in these classes. And then in regards to the survey, we did not survey, I don't know what the plans are for the upcoming school year, because we were just trying to get through this school year, and we were gonna be discussing the block schedule and having our focus groups and involving our faculty and staff in regards to going to block scheduling. But I do think that in regards to that, is that when we did survey, because we surveyed regarding the A-B, and then we surveyed regarding the block, and then we had different information sessions at each school to address the concerns and possibly to try to dispel some of the myths that were associated with going to block scheduling.
Did you get a sufficient response?
I did. I still would worry about that year in between languages and math. I can see it in English or history, but I do, I very much would worry about the foreign language in math. I think we'd have to be very careful to make sure that that would be planned accordingly so students weren't missing that much time in between.
And may I ask just one more thing in regards to that? And that's one of the reasons why we were gonna reach out to other schools and have teachers in our world languages and our cultural fine arts, career technical education, as well as teachers in our core classes, is to either have Zoom information sessions or visit those schools to discuss those types of things with the teachers who are experiencing it there. So that would be part of the professional development.
That's a great idea.
That we were looking at.
Madam Clerk, so note all of these things, and they're passed on so that they can remember what we've shared. Who's next? Dr. Carter?
Well, Mrs. Evans talked about one of the concerns I had with the, if a student just didn't, wasn't able to complete it, how would they, you know, go back into the next sequence or the next level without being able to do it in the same year? But my question is, so how does this work with CET, CTE courses and other types of courses of that type with the block schedule? So when do they take these other courses?
The other courses, such as the career technical education? And so for the cultural and fine arts and the career and technical education, so we have career and technical education courses at both programs, whether that are at Heritage and EC Glass. So in regards to having that, is that our supervisor of career and technical education is also looking at and had provided us with information on how the scheduling of those classes would be. So instead of possibly having a class that would go all year, it would be double-blocked so that we would be meeting the state's hour requirement, as well as providing students with that instructional support.
And I know some of these courses have a transportation time also associated with them, and we were able to do all of that, and the students can still participate in this block schedules without a lot of problems?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, that's one of the things, it was great to see Dr. Smith here. This year, it did afford our students the ability to be with him in the morning and to be with us in the afternoon, and also be able to take an elective where they normally wouldn't have been able to do so. And so that block schedule does afford itself for our dual-enrollment students, our Gov. School, our STEM students, and our early college students to be able to come back to the high school and participate a little bit more, as opposed to being so locked. as opposed to being so locked in to spending most, the majority of their day at those programs. The other thing that you asked, I think about the CTE programs when they're having to transfer from EC glass to Heritage. It's the same concept that pretty much a student would if they are cosmetology in their EC glass. What we have been doing, if a student needs to take a particular course, a core course at that high school, they would do that. And then they would do their career tech program at Heritage, per se. But the nice thing about the alternating block is the next day, they would be totally at their high school. Where the seven-period day, they didn't get that necessarily. There are some kids who totally have to take classes at Heritage in order to do a three-period block of cosmetology because of the travel period that's included. So that is a unique piece that the four-by-four block does afford us as a division as well.
And thank you for the reading material. That's great. Didn't have to look it up. So wonderful for that. And I was in some type of experimental block program years ago. And I, the thing that saved it is that the teachers were awesome. They were really awesome. But as other students were going in the hallway, I just looked like I was lost or lonely, because we were still there in the same room, just moved within the room. But the reading, most of the readings tell us that there are pros and cons, but that the chaos is greatly reduced, the behavior problems are reduced, and the calm is increased for the teachers and the students. And right now, with the students coming back in and just trying to get back to some semblance of normalcy, I think that's very important. And also, it talks about the amount of engagement, because you are with those teachers for a longer period of time. It's just that the teachers have to be really doing their job and exceptional and really engaging the students. Now, and the other thing is, so what if a student just does not like the other students in their block? What can they do, I mean, to the point that it's really impacting them educationally? Is, what can happen? What is the option for the student there? Because that may happen.
Yeah, so I smile because we have that now. Where, and we're with students, and they've decided that the personality between them and other students or teachers does not mesh, and it's conflict resolution. It is where, pretty much, we're able as counselors and as administrators, but as counselors to really work with teachers to give them strategies in order to, and also students. But it's along with giving teachers strategies on how to engage students, how to get them back a part of the process. The other thing that did talk about in the reading, and which we will also note, is that there will be smaller classroom sizes. It won't be drastic, but there will be smaller classroom sizes due to you're going from seven to eight. And the nice part about that, when I said conflict resolution, it gives us the opportunity as counselors in order to really work with students, because this is a part of getting them ready for the workplace, and that they will have conflict. And how do you work through that conflict? And how do you keep your goals and aspirations at the forefront? And so at this point, our ability to be able to do what we typically do in regards to that conflict resolution, in regards to engagement of students, and also getting families actively involved with us in the process and making sure that they keep the main thing, the main thing, which is their academic excellence and success post-high school.
All right, thank you. We're moving right along with time on this issue, but this is very important. What other board members would like to? Dr. Neillis?
I'm a little skeptical, surprise. Looking at some of the materials that were provided, it recommends a two-year process, and we're not anywhere close to that. You know, I think there's some important questions that have been brought up regarding foreign language classes and how they schedule AP classes. You know, the tests are in May, you know, and if someone's taking a, in the, I guess, the four-by-four block in the first semester, you know, they're... So I don't know if you're looking at ways to blend. I guess it might be important to consider that, as well as, you know, band and theater. Those really go throughout the whole year. So I understand some of the attraction to the four-by-four and AB block. I also wonder why we're just not going ahead with the four-by-four. I mean, I've heard reasons for that. It's just like, well, let's just go all in if we're going to do this. And it's not really, this discussion to me, I guess this is directed to the board overall. It seems like this is just an advisory thing. We're not really being asked to make a decision at this point. It seems like administration is committed that way. And I just want to make sure that we all have that understanding, because I'm not, I think that's what's going on, but I'm not quite sure, so.
And I think you're thinking correctly, Dr. Neillis, at this point. Dr. Edwards, did you want to say anything to that?
No, I'm just confirming that Dr. Neillis is correct. They're sharing information at the request of the board to bring back, to bring back more information. So you are correct.
Dr. Gupta?
Thank you for presenting, and we should acknowledge the three great principals.
Yes, we should.
You see Mr. BD every morning waving, so I hope he'll speak. But, you know, this is just professor in me. Certain classes I like to teach in 50-minute slots, some in 90 and some in three hours. So as Ms. Evans, I think I'm understanding right, was bringing it one-size-fit-all. Not all classes are suitable for that 90-minute block. Because some classes I like to have open discussion in two and a half hours, three hours is the ideal time. So that was my concern or suggestion, is we're putting them all in these blocks, and will all classes be suitable or candidates for that long office slot? And the second thing is hoping that we have involved faculty and students in that discussion as we're moving forward. There's a consensus from our major stakeholders, because faculty fatigue is one of the cons you brought up in those.
Yep, and I'll just say a few things. First, I just want to commend our school counselors for just the work that they do behind the scenes. They often do things that aren't seen on camera and, you know, visiting homes, going into jobs to make sure their kids are getting the credit recovery. And so really appreciate the work that they've done, especially during this pandemic, to get us through a very challenging and difficult school year. As far as the AB hybrid schedule and the four-by-four, we felt that this was a better transition instead of going to the four-by-four, because our students were so used to a seven-period day. And this sort of eases them into the four-by-four by doing an alternating block, where they, you know, they have seven classes, but they don't have them all in one day. And that gets them ready mentally and, you know, prepared for the four-by-four. When you're talking about a 90-minute block, you know, you're doing four classes one day, four classes another day, but you're seeing all your teachers every day. That's what we do on a seven-period day, except it's a hybrid block. And so that was sort of the rationale behind doing that. And that was, teacher input was given towards that. We felt that it would be easier transition instead of going just straight to the four-by-four. So that was where the teachers were involved in regards to that. I'm not sure, what was the other concern or question that was?
The structure.
Yeah.
But the structure of classes, is it suitable for all classes?
Right, and that's part of the PD in regards to maybe visiting other schools. There's something called a skinny block, where some school divisions are, do that in regards to the cultural arts program and some of the CTE programs to give students more flexibility to get those classes in. That's something that we'll learn more about going into the four-by-four block. But we do know that some of the other school divisions, Campbell and others, do a skinny block for the cultural arts programs and the CTE programs.
All right, I'll go to Mr. Harvey now.
I can see the advantages specifically for CTE with a block program. You know, many of the programs that I'm involved with, building trades and robotics and some of those classes, having an extended time period is a huge benefit. But I also appreciate the concerns that are being expressed here as well. You know, the concern that I have is, yes, this is change. We are, you know, as humans, many times opposed to change. But change that would happen right after what we've gone through with COVID. And I'm kind of cautious, because the question was raised, you know, have we talked with our teachers? And have we got, you know, them to buy into this? And we haven't yet done that. But yet, in less than two months, or right around two months, we're going to be going into this type of schedule. I do share that concern. That's all I would say from an advisory standpoint.
Mr. Harvey? We have talked to teachers, and we have solicited feedback. That, in fact, that is why we did not move immediately to a four-by-four block. We intentionally, our committee, scheduled meetings with all of our department chairs, from both high schools. They received feedback from their departments. And it was very clear that they were very concerned about moving to a four-by-four block for this upcoming year, although that's what had been recommended. So we said, no, we're not going to do that. Let's take this one step at a time. So we did listen to what their feedback was. And you're exactly right, that we have got to be intentional about talking about instruction. It's going to look different. It may look different. It's definitely going to look different from a coral class into an algebra 2 class. And it's important as the instructional leaders that we are in the classroom supporting them and relying on curriculum and instruction to help us out with that, too. We're working on professional development opportunities for them, potentially over the summer, if they want to come give feedback, have discussions about what are our look-for's in classrooms. We're committed, we're all in there together with them. But we did get feedback from our teachers. And many teachers were upset that we didn't go straight to four-by-four. So, and I think that actually, to go back to seven periods after being on an AB schedule now, where our classes were 75 minutes, this actually, to me, is going to be an easier transition than going back to 48 minutes and then looking at transitioning back. Now, that's not going to please everybody, and I know that I'll get some feedback on that. But I am very confident that our teachers and our staff are up to the challenge. And I know that we're all up to the challenge to support them. And I'm going to have people come in and watch and see what's going on in the classrooms.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
So Rose?
Where are you at, please, Dr.?
Just, all of you, not just Rose. If I can expand on that, since the previous school year, since we had graduation successfully, the students were on a, sort of a modified AB block for the two days a week that they were coming to school. So in a sense, they were coming A and B, two days a week, for 75 minutes. Now we're going to go A, B, A, B, A, B, five days a week for a longer period of time. So basically, what you're talking about is stamina, increasing the existing schedule that we just came off the pandemic, increasing the time, not only in the classroom, by about 15 minutes or so, but also increasing the stamina of getting back to the five days a week, doing what you just did for two days a week. I think that's the transition and the next step that they wanted to take, rather than just going straight to the four-by-four block for a semester and then another semester, so.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. The chair will recognize Ms. Evans, but before she speaks, is there any board member who has not spoken on this issue, since it would be apparent that we're winding down? And I was here for the first, Dr. Brennan?
I'm pleased to follow, Ms. Evans. Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Oh, you will? Okay, all right, Ms. Evans?
I just have a quick question, because somebody did ask me this. The dual enrollment classes that already require, there are some of them that are two periods a day, like the dual enrollment biology. You have the regular class and a lab every day. So the plan, is the plan to get that, so they will be with that teacher for three hours a day?
For next year, what we're going to do is that, because, so that they would have the hours, is that they would be with the teacher one block on A day and one block on B day. So that teacher would have them for every day so that they can meet the instructional hours that the community college requires for the completion of that course.
So it would just be one period on Monday and one on Tuesday? They wouldn't have, okay, that's so much better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Dr. Brennan?
Thank you all for being here and for providing all this information. It's very helpful, particularly those who do not have an education background. So thanks for all this information. I'm going to reiterate a couple of things that my fellow board member said, and I just have two quick questions. One is that, you know, the input that we've gotten from teachers, one was from Mr. Camden several months ago, who's been teaching for a long time. And then from Mr. Reed came last month to our board meeting, concerned about this. So I understand that there is a change and there is concern, but we certainly have some experienced teachers who are. And I know that, as you've talked about, you will support them, because obviously, it's that development of helping them to get through that 90-minute period that's going to be such a challenge for them. But I know you'll help them and want them to know that we've heard their comments. I also have a question. We talked about CTE, but for other courses like drama and like orchestra, things that are a year long, apparently on the four-by-four schedule is much more difficult to maintain those. How will you, how will that happen for programs that traditionally have been a year long? And my other question on the same way is, how do you address the AP question, where someone may take an AP course in the fall, but they're not going to take the exam until the spring? Or they're taking the AP course in the spring, but the exam is done before they've actually gotten through the material? How does that, those get addressed?
Good evening. And so, thank you for having all of us, the entourage, here to help go through some of this. So that's why we would be looking at skinny blocks, which is kind of like a year-long. So for those courses, and specifically that you just talked about, to ensure that there is not learning loss from one semester to another. That includes AP, and that includes your orchestra, your chorus, any of those arts, fine art courses. You would have that built in so that there is not a learning loss from one semester to another. And so that's some of the conversations that we are starting to have and looking at it and being intentional with our planning. And that is one reason why we did not jump into our four-by-four, say, August, per se, because we want to make sure we have looked at all kinks and addressed any concerns such as this, and made sure that we've had planning and ample time to plan to make sure that we roll it out successfully.
Thank you.
All right, I think Dr. Carter had one more comment, and then we'll...
I have read the information and heard this, but I really need to see it. Like, what does it look like for someone that doesn't? Like, how would this look on a schedule? I think that would clear up a lot if I saw like a presentation or just a PowerPoint that says, this course John Doe would take this, 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 A, and next day this, this, with like the CTEs, or if they're in some other, or dual enrollment. Like, how would it look?
Are you asking?
Versus what it looks like now? I can't, I don't know how it looks from the four-by-four to what it looks like now.
Are you asking for the, for this coming year, for the AB, or for the traditional block?
The one that we're thinking about, looking at, that we're focused on, the four-by-four, I guess.
Okay. We can probably do, absolutely.
I don't know how the AB looks either.
Well, we can do a mock schedule or what it would look like for both of them, and we can send those out.
Yes, we do have mock drafts that we've already started to work on, that our school council directors and schools have already started to visualize and plan out.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pugh. That would be exactly what we would like, Dr. Edwards, around Dr. Carter's statement. And I think that that would help us. I have been informed and educated beautifully tonight around this subject. I think that you all hit the spirit of what we wanted tonight as we continue this ongoing discussion. And my final conclusion is, we have a sharp group of administrators and people in our high schools and our middle school. And thank you all for coming tonight. Let's give them a hand also. Thank you for all that you do. All right, E3, budget development process. Now, I want the board to know that there is a micro and there's a macro to this. And our level and environment obviously would be in the macro. Dr. Edwards, if you could help us as we have a brief discussion around budget development?
Absolutely. So you have and have had a budget development...
So you have and, and have had a budget development calendar, which outlines timelines, the events that take place at the administrative level, also at the board level. And let me just reiterate that part of that budget development is looking at revenues. And often, we don't know our final revenues from the state until December, January-ish. And often, we don't know our final revenues from the city until later than that, depending upon city deliberations we, we can put in and ask, but as far as the final is concerned. So that's one wrinkle that makes budget development a little harder. You can imagine if someone said, Dr. Edwards, you have X amount of dollars, go for it. This would be a lot easier process because revenues would be guaranteed. But part of that is built into the budget calendar. Much of the budget work at the micro level begins with us, the administrative teams, the school teams, as you see here. One of the things that they did not mention when they talked about block scheduling is the effect of staffing. Moving next year, it's pretty simple in terms of, we've already been on an A B block. But many times when you want to offer lots of flexibility and you want to offer multiple skinny blocks and you want to offer multiple classes at the same time so that students may be able to shift, you're looking at staffing. Those are critical conversations that we would need to have early fall with the administrative team. That's when we start our work. We sit down and we look at the building, the building needs. We look at resources. We look at last year's budget and we say, how were funds allocated? How were funds spent? And the why behind, if there are any discrepancies between, hey, we thought we were going to use this money to do that, but we did not. Sometimes it's, we got a grant fund to do it, or we had CARES funding in the case of, of this past year. Or it may just be the cost for that was not what we thought, or we no longer need that. Those are the conversations at the building levels and the department levels that we have as we build the budget going forward. We do vet all the requests, you can imagine. I love my building principals because they come ready to ask for everything that they want, everything that they need. And we spend time trying to make the best decisions across the division. So what ends up coming to the board is not necessarily everything that was requested. And I just want the board to understand that there is a lot of, at the micro level, chipping away and sort of reimagining, rethinking. You can think of just something as simple as, my class size is going up in my building, I might need another fourth grade teacher. And in another building, class size is going down and I'm collapsing a teacher. Well, if we don't have someone connecting the dots, we could have someone losing a job on one end and someone adding a staff member on another end unless we say, how about we repurpose a staff member from one building to the next? Those are the things that we do at the division level when we're working with the administrative staff to make budgetary decisions. Projections, looking at costs. Of course, health insurance is always a wild card that Kim and team do a great job of trying to predict. And just the cost of energy and things like that are all at the micro level. So on the budget calendar, you can see that prior to us bringing that first round of budget information to you in January, we spend the better part of the beginning of the year working with the administrative team. And you might think that's a simple thing to do, but trying to ask a building principal in October, what do you need for August in terms of staffing and, and resources and supplies, is a difficult conversation sometimes, but they make it work and they work with us. And we're trying to get more efficient at not having so many requests after the budget is developed. So I do have the calendar. I wanted to explain, excuse me, what we do at the micro level. And then there's a macro piece of what the board does. And I think that part of it will be the bulk of the topic of conversation tonight. Excuse me. So, Dr. Coleman, I'm going to turn it back to you for the board macro part.
All right. The floor is open. We are prayerful that this conversation will give us some level of clarity. And one of the most important roles that we have as a board, and that is the approval of a budget that will move the division forward. So at the macro level, what are the thoughts and reflections about process? We have a process. We're just bringing it before you because there may be someone who wants us to, to look at this deeper. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this is the time to ask this, but as we started the process last year and got into it, as a board member, you know, you see, we went through that list that you gave us, which was great, being able to go through everything, but that's just one little piece of it. So being able to see an old one, I think I asked it one time, to be able to see a comparison of the rest of it. Does that make sense? Like, I felt like I was, I was looking at these requests with not the whole piece of the puzzle there. And I think it would have been nice to have both. I don't know if that fits into this discussion or not, but.
Well, to your point, Bill, I guess what the superintendent, the, the micro, they're going to do all of that part. What we want to know is what do we want? What do we need to be able to make our decisions when it comes to us ultimately? And the calendar has been before us for some time now. And I guess what I think I'm hearing you say is that a previous budget to look at?
Well, I, I just say, Gary can jump in, because I don't think I'm saying it really the way I mean to say it, but we did talk about it.
Mr. Harvey, would you like to comment?
No, I, I think, I think School Board Member Evans is correct. I mean, if I could summarize my experience this past year with looking at our school board budget, we spent two months talking about this matrix with all of these items on it. And all we simply did was take everything that we approved on this matrix and we added it to it from last year. That's what we did. And I think what the question is, is do we look at last year's budget, which is the base budget, side by side with the proposed budget for this year as that comparison? And I, for one, did not feel like we did that. And I might be incorrect in that, but I remember our, I attended every school board meeting and every work session. And we focused in January and February on this document. And we really did not look at our base budget again. So where, where this causes me to have pause is that we've had the luxury this year, and I might not phrase this correctly, so I do apologize, but we've had the luxury this year of CARES funding. And Dr. Edwards has warned us. We got CARES funding this year, we got CARES funding next year, but there will be a time of reckoning when we have to go before city council to, to be able to support this budget. And we'll have to be able to replace what we have in CARES funding for this year and next year with what we get from city council. So my thinking all along had been, the only way that we would really be able to tackle that would be to be reexamining our base budget from what we had before that we added these items to. And so I appreciate the fact that we're talking about this calendar, but when I look at this calendar, I'm thinking to myself, okay, in February, a lot of this reconciliation that we will ultimately have to do in the third year needed to take place at that time for us to meet this calendar. And I could have missed it, I might have misunderstood, but I didn't see that really happening. I've, I've said a couple times that I apologize to two school board members because in January and February, when we were going through this, my understanding was each individual item, we were saying whether or not we felt was a legitimate item for further discussion to be included in our budget. Not that we were just constantly adding each one of these items to our budget, but that's ultimately what we did. Our base budget, to my understanding, did not change, but we added these items to it. And if I'm wrong in that, please, please, please correct me, because I'm trying to grow in my understanding of this process. I understand the calendar, but I'm just trying to understand the process of, of the budget.
Before the chair recognizes Dr. Gupta, I wanted to make sure I'm trying to get clear. School Board Members Evans and Harvey suggesting that we should have looked at the 2020, 2021 budget in preparation for the 2122 budget that we are about to approve our trust later in this meeting? Is that what you're saying?
I think we're saying you should be able to compare the two.
To compare the two. Dr. Gupta.
If you look at the Lynchburg City School budget, eighty-nine percent, correct me, Ms. LaCanage, if I'm wrong, is human resources. So that's a fixed cost. That's not going to change from seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, other than you giving any raises to the employees. So that's a constant. What is, could be, and, and on top of that, you got fixed costs for departments like transportation, maintenance, IT. So if you take all those things out, there's not much movement in the budget other than some strategic allocations, which may happen if there's an additional dollar from state. So going forward from year to year, there's not much float out there in a business term or free money in a layman's sense in the budget. So I don't know what utility will it bring to see year to year, very micro level discussion, which knowing that none of those factors are going to change unless we decide that we're going to lay off and make the slate complete clean, you know, take out the human resource cost. It's a labor-intensive industry. So I don't know what value will it bring? And I understand, I used to ask the same question in the beginning. I used to hear that, don't go into the weeds. And now I've understood, I'm going too much micro level. You know, they said, don't micromanage me. Macro level, going at a higher level and looking at it. And but when I look at higher level, there's not much flexibility in this budget. CARES money this time, yes, there was some, but it's not sustainable, as we said. So we got to find ways out of that. So those are the strategic issues which this board decides. So if we got a CARES money, we know it's not sustainable, how could we sustain it going forward? To me, that's a macro level discussion.
All right. So before us tonight, it's a, it's a simple discussion. It is that we have a process. The calendar, even though it doesn't say bum, 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 takes us from the planning at the micro level in September, brings us to the January piece, and ultimately by July, we, June, July, we adopt the 2022, 23 budget for next year, obviously tonight, the 2021, 2022 budget. So we could go on and on tonight. I just think that the board should find a resting place. Are we satisfied with this? Is there anything else we want to say to administration that we want from them so that we can adequately approve a budget or participate in the process of approval? That's what I think we need to hear. And right now, I hear two school board members talking about a comparison of the previous budget with the budget under review is one thing. And I don't know if we're in agreement with that or not, or whatever else we want to say. Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I think that we get, I may be wrong, Mrs. LaCanage, don't we get on our financial summary last year's expenditures and revenue and receipts compared to this year every month?
You do on, on one of the reports. It does have the prior year. When we did the budget presentation, we did do the expenditures that does show the previous year adopted. And it shows the comparison of it, but I'm not sure what level of detail you're, you are asking for. Because that, that part at the higher level, at the summary by major category, was provided in the presentation. So I guess I was, I would, if I could have, ask for a point of clarity of what, how much detail are you, are you requesting for that?
I could, and I see other board members, but I want to stay with Ms. Morrison and see if we can clarify. Mr. Canage is wanting to know, what details are you talking about, even if we want that? Ms. Morrison, did you want to say?
I do. I think that we, as board members, need to pay, pay attention to what's in the budget. And I think anytime that there is a question, we have the right to ask that question. And I am okay with the bigger picture, but I acknowledge that others in their attempt to understand might have more detailed questions that would help all of us. For example, if someone notices a major cost increase in a certain department, what would cause that increase? I think those are legitimate questions, and I think we should ask them every month. I think that, that as board members, we're not trying to micromanage the, the accounts or the expenditures, but we're working for understanding. And I think that that is something that could be ongoing, and I think we have the right to ask those questions.
All right. Very good. All right. Dr. Carter, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
And then we'll go to Dr. Senha, and then Dr. Gupta.
I was going to say that I appreciated the budget process, and I really think we've gotten more details and more information in the last couple of years than we've ever got. And I try to, and I know that Mrs. LaCanage and Dr. Edwards are very good at looking at the budget from a month-to-month basis and also making sure that we don't have, as before, we just have these large, large ask to move, move something to another place or to use a surplus. Right now, we're doing it more on a regular basis so that we don't have all of this last-minute crunch to move a certain amount of funds to get buses or whatever. We're really looking at that on a month-to-month basis. And I'm pleased with the way it's going now.
Okay. Dr. Carter, Dr. Senha.
Yeah, I would propose, especially this year, because there are a lot of additions in staffing and other resources, the virtual academy, changes to the structure of the HR department, that when we approach budget time, that we get some sense of, did we get a return on the investment? Did we see the outcomes that we, that, that we felt justified adding these positions? Did it result in greater retention or better candidates or more efficient processes? Were learning outcomes enhanced? Did we save money by having our own psychologists as opposed to contracting out? Some, some indicator so that, you know, we can assess whether or not, as we go into next year and we prepare for transitioning away from CARES funding to shifting the burden onto the city, that, that we can still justify those kind of positions or if shifts in resources need to be made because we've identified areas that have emerged as issues to be addressed. And I'm, I'm hoping that what I'm saying in this is capturing sort of the essence of what you're talking about. Because you're right, Ms. Morrison, we do get sort of on an itemized level what expenditures are year to year, and we can see how they've changed from time to time. And we can see, and we've gotten explanations for changes, like it appeared that we were underfunding instruction, but really what it was, was a proper reclassification of non-instructional positions to a more appropriate place. Well, when you shift all those personnel and the money that they earned in salaries and benefits, it looks like we're cutting on instruction, our primary function. So we have gotten that level of detail, but I think that moving forward, because this year's kind of unique with, at least in my memory of the years that we've gone over this in terms of the number and type of positions and the things that we realized we need to do as we recover from pandemic and all that, that we'll have some sense of, of how that worked out and the extent to which we can continue justifying having those resources or those expenditures.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Gupta.
I was reflecting back on our conversation last week. So my disagreement about the process was not about the calendar. It's about like zero-based budgeting, need-based budgeting, you know? When we talk about that this year's budget will be need-based budget, are we truly going into need-based? So that may require some reallocation of resources. When we say we are doing a zero-based budgeting means everybody starts, you know, so you take everybody's needs at that time and then develop a budget upwards. So that's the process conversation I was pointing out before, but not about. about this calendar.
All right. The chair would like to know if there's any board member that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak on this issue. All right, Mr. Harvey?
And I appreciate this discussion because this is, this is very helpful to me. I had no question about the calendar. The calendar is not the question. It's more of the process of what occurs during the calendar that, that is, that is the reason why I brought up this concern. Dr. Edwards, if I believe I'm correct, what we received this year from the city, I believe in one of your comments, you, you said we're actually two million, is it two million less?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So we're two million less than what we got last year, correct?
Correct.
And, and, and last year, we were several million less than we got the year before?
Yes. They, well, they gave us flat, but then they cut us mid-year.
So, so we've had the previous two budget years, both of which have been during my tenure on here, our budget has been cut from city council. And so what my concern is, this year, we are looking at adding a substantial amount of monies. And I apologize, I did not, I should have done my homework and added all these figures up. But we have added that to the same budget, the budget number that we had last year. We've received basically flat funding minus $2 million. We're able to have this covered by CARES funding, which will run out in two years. So in three years, we will have to go back to city council and request the additional millions that we've had cut from our budget each year, in addition to the monies, the, the, the amount of CARES funding that is now paying for some of these additional programs. So if, if, if we understand that as an ask that we have to go back to council on, we all understand that we're going to have to do our due diligence about, we can't go ask for that whole amount. So where are we going to get that from? Is it, is it going to come from some items in our base budget? Or are we going to eliminate all of these items that we just added? And I guess that's what I'm saying about the process. I feel like as we're developing that budget, we need to, as a board, understand that process. And thankfully, because of CARES funding, we've got another year to kind of work this out before we get into D-Day, when we have to present a budget to, to our city council, which will clearly be a raised ask. That's, that's what I'm saying. So I just want to clarify to the chair, my questions are not regarding the calendar. I completely understand the calendar and the timeline in which things happen. But it's the process of how we, as a board, develop our budget that we present to city council. And being able to develop that budget and being able to competently stand behind that budget is critical for me, based on the obligation that I've been bestowed upon by council.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I think that we can move on, having heard the board share. It would appear to me that Ms. Morrison has made it clear that this is an ongoing process where questions can be raised along the way, that our administration has been more responsive in answering questions and giving us information, and that from Dr. Senha's statements, a budget analysis or helping us to understand outcomes as a part of that introductory part of when we begin to discuss the budget will be very helpful. This board has not approved, even though I think very shortly we will, we have not approved the 2122 budget yet. And we do not know, maybe I'm an optimist, we don't know whether or not everything is going to work so well with our virtual academy and everything else, that we're going to be okay. But realizing all of the options, if we were to include what I've heard tonight, I think that that will strengthen what we are doing going forward. Dr. Edwards, your thoughts?
Yes, I'm going to go back to what Ms. Laconic said, because I think I have the same question. And you guys know, I'm, I'm an educator at heart, but more importantly, I'm a learner. And I love for learners to be successful. And if this were a classroom and you were my teachers, I would say, what am I going to give you in January so that you say, "Yes"? That is exactly what I need. So I'm looking at the regular monthly financial report.
Right.
It's broken down by certain expenditures. Do we start this budget process with, here is the financial report for the previous school year, broken down by the same exact expenditures that you see on the monthly report, except it's a summary of, let's just say, this is the 2021 school year, before we start the next budget process? And then you would have that, and by the time we get through the next budget process, you will have an identical financial report broken down by those ma, same major categories, so that you would have them side by side? Because what I, I keep hearing is, I need to see what it was and what it looks like in the base budget. Is that the, is that, would that help? Is that what you're asking for?
Dr. Gupta?
You know, if I'm looking at previous budget, Dr. Edwards, what I'm personally looking for is the variances. The variances, positive and negative, where we had savings, where we spend more money. So that gives me an idea going forward, where the resource allocation possibilities are there, and are they being exploited, is not a good word, being utilized, you know? So to me, personally, that will be the reason to look at the old budget, is to see the variances in those line items or buildings or whichever way you want to divide it up. So it gives me, again, going back to the macro level, seeing, are we looking back to the zero-based, you know, need-based budgeting, when you call. So are we reallocating resources based on the need? Because if you have a, a negative variance, it means you're not using it, let somebody else use that money.
Okay. So you're helping me, Dr. Gupta, and Kim, help me too, because this falls on the shoulders of you and I. So prior to us doing fund balance for the next year, because we have to shore up all, all of those major categories to see what we budgeted for, what we actually spent, what's left over, what rolled in from Medicaid or any other places that end up in our fund balance? Is that the time when you now can see side by side, you know, here's what we budgeted for, here's what we actually spent, here's the variance? Because the variance for what was unspent, I will say, will roll over into fund balance in most cases, unless it's already in a reserve account like the textbook account. But you would also see changes in, if something was transferred out, because we do make transfers throughout the year, so you would see that variance. And at that point, we would say, well, this account was, you know, whatever, $100,000. It ended up being $50,000. And you will recall on the blah, blah, blah board meeting, we transferred $50,000 from here to there. So that explains that. Or this was many times, you know, 21 positions that were not filled. That's what this resource is from. Is, is that what?
So it's a consolidated variance you're saying. What I'm hearing is, to give you an idea, we have about a million and a half dollars of unfilled vacancies each year, which are rolled over, you know, for certain reasons, one reason or the other. So if I can live without a person, is it, can I live without them forever? If yes, then give that position to somebody else who is desperately needed, maybe a counselor, you know? So I'm just giving you an example. So that's the reallocation, but in a consolidated move, it may be difficult for see, to see, for the finance committee, where that movement is happening in terms of variance.
So similar to what we did with school bus drivers, when we, we had all those open positions, we're never going to get that many, but maybe we'll get that many. We took that money, increased it to eight hours. We also added a VRS, and that's how we, that's how we paid for bus drivers by consolidating. And that's what we did as an administrative team and shared with you all as a strategy that we used to increase, you know, the bus driver hours and the number of eight-hour positions. So that's the kind of stuff that you're talking about.
Yes. Because it's not going into micromanagement, just looking at making sure that everybody has a fair share of their money in terms of when they're not using it, give it, if I have 50 bucks in my pocket and I'm not using it, my sibling can use it, let them use it.
All right.
What's the point in having that money?
I'll take $50.
Very good. So Dr. Edwards, is that helpful?
It does. I think we try to do that, but what's probably confusing you all is that we're telling you when we're doing it, these things are happening, we've consolidated this. So it may not be in one period in time. So I know you all remember us having a conversation about, we're going to take some bus driver positions, we're going to increase them to eight hours. But it wasn't at a, let's look at the budget in totality. These were things that we were doing as we were working with the administrative team and planning going forward. And we didn't call them out when we got to March to say, "Let's go back and say, how did we do this kind of thing? Where did this, these funds come from?" We can try to consolidate that at a period in time so that we can roll that back in front of you. But some of that, we do. So I will say some of it's going to get missed, because like I said, particularly if you're looking at, you know, 11 elementary schools and just think of the vast number of teachers, we're going to miss the fact that we should have added a staff member, what we switched and we moved some folks to, to cover some positions. We may not catch every single one of those in time, but we can give you sort of a summary, if that helps.
Does anyone have anything germane to say to the point in hand? Because we're trying to make sure that Dr. Edwards has clarity now that we've had our broader discussion. Dr. Carter, then Dr. Senha?
And I think also we need to remember that Dr. Edwards did a presentation about a budget story. And in that included a lot of information we're now saying that we didn't get, but we did receive. And it was in a PowerPoint presentation, talking about just all of the things that our budget was going to address and what we needed.
Very good. Dr. Senha?
Yeah, I would agree, agree with that. I, I think back to your first year here, when you restructured your administration and went to a deputy superintendent and walked us through those shifts and how you were shifting positions, consolidating responsibilities, and streamlining, streamlining some things to free up some money. One, to just keep funding level and other things. And you really walked us through that in a nice way. So perhaps, yeah, a similar summary, because I certainly wouldn't want us to get into the business of saying, oh, you've had this position you've been searching for all this time. Do you really need it? You need to make those decisions and present them to us of why, and then it's up to us to ask, but not, not necessarily to, to choose for you. You're the expert, and we entrust in you that you're more than capable of making those kinds of shifts and changes. And you have come to us. You came up to us with the HR plan, changes in personnel. So, so I do think it's all there. We just have to be mindful and sort of maybe curate it in a annual summary, perhaps. I don't know what would satisfy the group, you know, in terms of those of you that have these questions, because we do get the year-to-year comparisons.
And keep in mind, everybody, we do have master board and other opportunities for further clarification. We wanted to have a simple discussion tonight. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I, I will specifically answer your, your question. For me, if this were a normal budget year, non-COVID, non-CARES, and you came to me and said, "Okay, board, I would like to add 10 more behavioral counselors, five more math teachers, buy a new bus, et cetera," I would first want to know, where at in our budget have we gone back and looked at, and where could there have been savings or monies that we could reallocate to handle this, before I go to council and ask for those additional monies? That would be the most clear example I could share of, of kind of what I'm looking for. I'm, I, it seems like when I ask for information or ask for clarity, it's always being accused that I'm trying to get into the weeds. But from the business standpoint in me, these are some of the things that, that help me understand why I'm voting on something, or why I'm going to go to council and defend something. I think I've been pretty vocal each time with this board that I've been here. I will go to council and I will fight the good fight for things that I can believe in. But I also want to make sure that every time I go and fight the good fight for these things that I believe in, that we have been thrifty with what we have already received, and we have maximized that to the best of its ability. And if we need to, as Dr. Gupta, the perfect example Dr. Gupta gave, maybe we have 10 positions that we haven't filled for five years. Well, if we haven't had them for five years and the wheels haven't fallen off, maybe we don't need those positions. So then that allowance of monies could be used for some of these other things that we want. Our school system's going to mature and evolve over time. And some of the things that we had that were critical, that we needed 10 years ago, might not be needed next year. And so that's all I'm bringing forward. I'm trying to understand, I've been charged with being the, the chair of the finance committee, and I take this obligation seriously. And I want to be able to defend the budget and understand the budget completely.
If I can respond to that, because you just gave me a point of clarity that I had an aha moment as you were speaking, because you said, "If I want to add this position, are there things that I should be looking at that maybe I could swap out this?" And then I can bring that to you and say, "That's what I want to do." And I think where the aha moment I just had is, I do that, and I don't bring this position to you because I've already done that, and it doesn't require an additional budget item. So if I'm looking at, like when we got the extra social worker and, and those kinds of things before, some of those swap outs, we are doing, and we're like, that's budget neutral, and we, we just got another request to do something. If we can't fill this, can we swap it for that? It's budget neutral. That's not something that I would bring to you and say, "Hey, I need to add another position of blah, blah, blah," if we can work it out at the administrative level to be budget neutral. But what I'm hearing you say is, when I do ask for that, you want to make sure that I've already done that process. And what I'm saying to you in most instances, what I'm asking for is things that we've exhausted that process. You did ask us for a list of unfilled positions, and we did provide the board with a list of unfilled positions so that you could see. And, and I don't remember any board member saying, "Absolutely, take these people off the list. We, we don't need them from the list." But we wanted you to see that we've skinny that list. It really is like a math teacher. It's not that we don't need the math teacher. There's a sub in there. There's a body in there. We can't keep us, we can't get rid of the position and say, "We're just going to stick with status quo and, and keep the, the substitute in there." We still have to find that math teacher with that. With the bus drivers, we did kind of skinny the list a little bit and trade that up. But many of those positions, if you go back to that list, are positions that are, they're unfilled, but there, in most cases, are substitute teachers who are sitting in those positions, whether they're a 90-day sub or a daily sub, or, or in some cases, a teacher who said, "I'll take the sixth class and I'll be the sub," sitting in there. And that's not a sustainable thing either. You don't want to say to your existing staff, "We're going to cut that position so that all of you can continue to teach multiple periods." So that work does go on. I don't want anyone to think that we don't look at the existing budget and do as many budget-neutral swaps. And my favorite are the ones that are budget-saving swaps, where we're like, great, now we got a little bit of extra money from that change here and there. But if I'm hearing you correctly, you want to know when we do that.
I'm not saying I want to know when we do that, but when you come to the, to the board with a list like this, how are we going to fund it in three years? I mean, there are questions that we're going to cover tonight. You know, my understanding is, we've got CARES funding to cover some things that, if they're successful, which, boy, I really hope that they are, how do we fund those in the future, especially when we, we have to go to city council and ask for a sizable amount of money? And we, if, what happens if we get a no? What are we going to do? We're going to have to really roll up our sleeves, but based on the calendar, that's not going to happen until April or May.
All right. If, if, if the board overrules me, I will gladly accept that. I think we've discussed this sufficiently for tonight. And I think that at least Dr. Edwards has more understanding, in that total, of what we need to do in relationship to our process. And I think that she's articulated some concerns very nicely. I do want Dr. Gupta to make a final statement on this matter, since I did see his hand before I made that. And if the board overrules me, we'll continue to discuss this. But this is an ongoing piece. Dr. Gupta?
Continuing on the same thing, you know, if you look back to those $3.2 million in new positions, which were coming from CARES new positions which were coming from CARES funding, this board voted 8 to 1 to approve them. The question was not that those positions are not needed, the question for that vote against those positions was the sustainability of them going forward. And that, but till we try, we don't know whether they are needed or not. So I thought, in the end, this is a, we need the mental health counselor, you know, we need all the support, so let's try and then we'll figure out how the resource allocations will happen in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Unless there is someone, otherwise, if we could take a five-minute break, I think we can come back and deal with items four, five, six, seven, and eight very nicely and move into closed meeting. A five-minute recess. Now to reconvene. Give everybody a chance to reassemble. And as we're moving forward in our agenda.
Seven o'clock, you're welcome to join us.
E4 is coming before us for action tonight. And if you remember, Dr. Jordan presented this to us last time. And so if she's available or however, Dr. Edwards wants to handle E4 on federal programs.
Absolutely. As Dr. Coleman said, Dr. Jordan presented the federal programs. We do have a July 1 deadline, which is why this is coming back up at the work session for approval. And if there are any other questions, both Dr. Jordan and Ms. Kristi Compton are here to answer or follow up on anything.
All right. This is an action item tonight. And so, board members, govern yourselves accordingly. Are there any further questions? Dr. Gupta?
I make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
All right. Then moved by Dr. Gupta, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we would approve our federal programs 2021-22. Is there any further questions or discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, if you please call the role.
School Board Member Evans.
Yes.
School Board Member Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, board. E5 is now dealing with facilities rental. And each of you have had an opportunity to have discussions with this in various ways. And we're going to ask Dr. Edwards to lead us in this discussion.
Absolutely. So this is regarding the rental of the RCI complex for the relocation of our Jackson Street staff, the Virtual Academy staff, and potentially the Empowerment Academy staff. And we presented to you all some options. We talked about the process of looking at various properties all over Lynchburg. So thank you to all the people who helped us with that. But we did come up with the best proposal being the RCI complex, which we formerly inhabited as, when we had family in sight and our kids were there for two years. So this would require that we have both relocating some offices for office staff, but also children from the Empowerment Academy there. We provided you with some information regarding costs and square footage and tried to summarize any outstanding questions. But I have the team here tonight, just in case there was anything else that we missed or did not answer or any additional questions that may have been raised about the facility.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. So I'm of the assumption that this would be on our agenda at our regularly scheduled meeting for approval.
It actually does not require a vote. As one of our policies, you do give Kim and I the authority to enter in. However, we would never want to do anything like that without full transparency and board support. So that's why we are just opening up and making sure that we've answered any questions and considered any concerns and did due diligence.
So then I interpret that to mean unless there's any stoplight tonight, then this matter would continue to move forward into its process. Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Edwards, a member of your team, you sent an email today that has a sheet on, it's called RCI Complex Proposed Funding. Could someone walk that through for those of us who have not seen that before to make sure we understand how the costs are handled for the next several years?
Certainly. Ms. LaCanet, you want to kind of go over the costs again?
Sure. On the first column for your fiscal year 2020-21, that is currently what we pay for out of our, through our operating budget. When you go to the following year, the 21-22, we would still have a portion that is not eligible for CARES at the RCI complex, as well as there's a six months, because the current rental is from January through December, there is a six-month period that we have already paid for. So that for 2021-22, that is budget neutral off by 600 and some dollars in the operating budget. And then you would have the 146,000 that was funded in CARES. The following year, you would not have that dual rental. And the next, the following two years, you would have the operating at the 36,665.28 and the remainder of the rental funded through CARES. And we do have three different pots of CARES funds. And the oldest one, the CARES 3, does take you through September 30th of 2024. So in fiscal year 2024-25, that would be where we would have to decide and reassess the programs. We will have had the facility study. We would really have to do an overhaul to see what are we going to do in that year? Because if there's no additional funds and the CARES funds have expired, we would have to look at that coming back into our operating budget. And that would be the full 188,000. The first columns are just showing what the current estimated square footage is and what it would be for at the new location and the number of employees and the number of students.
Is that sufficient, Dr. Brennan?
So yes, I think so. So to clarify, we're currently paying $61,000 for the units in our current budget.
That is correct.
And without CARES funding in 2024-25, we'd be paying 188,000 or almost 190,000.
That's correct.
That would be the difference for three years from now.
Correct.
Any further questions and thoughts? We've all had an opportunity to look into this. And I want to thank administration for your efforts to find a way to make things happen for us. And I certainly am thankful for it and in agreement with it. If there's no further discussion at this time about it, then, Dr. Edwards, we would like you to proceed and move forward with the facilities rental.
Okay. I will keep you posted.
Thank you so much. Now, E6, in my mind, is for adoption tonight. And so this is for action. And this is fiscal year 2021-22 school operating budget, Dr. Edwards and Ms. LaCanet.
Okay. So this, you know, city council approved their budget. We did a preliminary approval at the end of March, and then we give our budget to city council. Now that they have approved funding for us, that solidifies our revenues. So what you have before you are the budget that we presented to city council also when we had our public budget hearing. So those documents are the original documents that we had from those dates. And it is up for final approval from this school board.
All right. The floor is open for discussion. Had we not received what we asked for from council, this might be a different meeting, but it still has the opportunity for discussion. Anyone would like to have any discussion on this matter? Or is there a motion? Dr. Gupta?
Is this an action item?
I am considering it to be, yes.
I make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion from Dr. Gupta, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we would adopt officially the FY 2021-22 school operating budget. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Mr. Harvey?
Regarding the current budgeting of LCS funding to provide health insurance for board members. The proposed budget allows for $6,975 for each board member for family premiums. That total number is $62,775 that will be, need to be budgeted annually and increasing with premium increases. But this is not the true cost to LCS, since LCS is self-insured. LCS will incur costs for the health care of all family members of board members who accept the health insurance. Ultimately, that cost is unknown. Many members of this very board have questioned the sustainability of the current LCS health insurance fund year, each year, and have questions amounts that needed to be added to the fund to keep it solvent. They have asked if and when premiums for staff might need to increase to meet the growing costs of health care. LCS is already has budgeted to incur the rising costs of premiums for our staff for the 2021-2022 school year. Each additional board member or their family members receiving care from LCS self-insurance will add additional burden to the system already under strain. Ultimately, this increased strain could cause premiums to rise even further for LCS staff and cause premiums to increase. Many school board members have stated that they will not be taking their insurance. So why is there the need for this in the first place? The only rationale given to support this measure was to provide an incentive for members of the community to seek to serve on the school board. If a candidate for this position needs incentives beyond doing what is right for our students and their staff in the form of full family health care for what would only classify as a part-time position in most community businesses, then I ask, why should that candidate be considered for this position? Every constituent that I have spoken with is against this budget item and has caused concerns with the very actions of this board in the eyes of our community. As an individual board member, I cannot in good conscience support this budget item. So therefore, I make a friendly amendment to motion that this line item for providing family health care coverage for members of the LCF school board be removed from this budget.
Is there a second to Mr. Harvey's motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Nellis. Now, we, the board will go into discussion, but I want to make sure we've got the specifics. Can you state the line item you're talking about? And if that's being taken out, then what else does that mean?
It would simply mean that we would no longer have the ability for health care premiums for school board members.
All right. On the income side, that means what? In terms of the balance? If this were to be removed, I'm just asking.
If it were to be removed, we would have a positive $62,775, if I am correct in my calculations based on the metrics that we received.
All right. With that level of understanding, there is a motion on the floor to remove the health insurance item, which would reduce our total budget by around $62,725. We will now entertain discussion. Ms. Evans?
I'm just going to say I agree with that. The feedback that I've heard also has been very similar. And I'm going to agree that we are not employees of Lynchburg City Schools. I still wish that the stipend and the insurance were allowed to go in. It's two different pieces, but the board decided not to do that. So I feel like if I'm accurate, this is not just this is not just the insurance piece, because the whole thing was together, I believe, as one. They didn't let us vote on two things. You put it as one on the budget. So I think it would take everything out, not just this. But I'm also in support of that. I don't think it's the right thing to do either.
Well, to make out a motion, help the board to appreciate, are you asking for the health insurance line item to be removed only? Are you asking for that in light of Ms. Evans' statement that would also remove the stipend for the board and the possible stipend for the chair?
I, as an individual board member, will not be accepting the stipend, but I am not requesting that that be removed. I am only requesting the removal of the premiums, the family premiums for school board members. And I would add that although this number of $62,775 in our annual budget, that is only a fraction of what the potential cost could be to LCS, because we are self-insured. And so the cost of every single medical procedure, doctor's appointment, et cetera, would be actually covered by LCS.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And Dr. Nillis, just for clarification, would you second it? Did you second it with that understanding?
Yes, that was just for the health insurance.
Yes, sir. All right. Further discussion by the board? Ms. Morrison?
I too have had a lot of thought and feedback about this one, and understand better now the implication for having this, and I will be voting to remove it, remove the health insurance from the budget.
Is there further discussion?
You know, I know when we had the discussion, there was some discussion, you know, about equity and considerations and all that, but it's like, do we offer part-time employees' health insurance that work 10 hours a week? I mean, where's the equity in that? I mean, my personal reaction was this is pretty self-serving for us to vote ourselves health insurance. It's a, it's a pretty big fringe benefit, normally reserved for full-time or mostly full-time employees.
All right. I certainly will be acknowledging the fact that I would not be accepting the health insurance, but I will continue to support this as an option for persons who may well need it for reasons that I would not lengthen the meeting to share, but I will continue to support the health insurance option for board members. And so I will not be supporting the motion that is before us, and that's just my one thought. Any further questions or discussion tonight on this before we move to a vote? Yes, Dr. Brennan?
I just want to say that I think that, I think that the budget that we voted on and agreed upon, which does a lot more than just give health insurance to board members, is a great budget. And I don't want this budget that we will vote on tonight to be, to miss the fact that we've given raises to staff, that we've done a lot of other things. I think this is a very small part of the budget. Having said that, I did not understand when we had this original discussion that a large sum of money, which is perhaps $62,000 or some amount, is putting aside regardless of whether a board member takes this insurance or not. And my simple understanding was that if a board member took it, then that cost would be there. But they're actually putting a lump sum of that money, if only one person does it, or no one does it, that lump sum still goes in the pot, which I'm very uncomfortable with that. So I'm going to say that I, that I'm going to vote in favor of this motion also. I think that's not what I originally intended or understood.
I'd like to have clarification from Dr. Edwards and Ms. LaCanage. I was under the impression that once, once this matter was determined by the board, that those monies could be appropriated.
So it's similar to what we do now. Whenever we have a new staff member, we put a posting out for a teacher. We assume they're going to take health insurance. We budget for it so that we have the money there. And if you recall, sometime in January, February, March is when we'll say, you know, we have excess funds in salary and benefits. Sometimes it's the benefits line where we may have to make a request for a transfer if it's that, or use those benefits monies to cover claims. But we do have to budget, because if you think through our budget approval process and not knowing what school board members will do or select, we have to budget for all nine of you in our school board.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. If there's no further discussion, we're going to ask that the clerk would call the roll. If you vote yes, you are in support of the motion which would remove the health insurance package item only. That would be around $62,775,000 that would not be in the budget on the expense side. If you vote no, that means that you are against the motion and in favor of the health package remaining. Everyone clear on how you're voting? Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Scoop up, Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Coleman?
No.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now, we have removed from the budget the line item on health insurance package, and now we are still on a discussion around the approval of the budget itself. And there was a motion, so we include that. So we have a motion and a second for the approval of the budget minus the health insurance package. Is there any further questions or discussion to approve the 2021-22 school operating budget minus the health insurance line item? All right. If you vote yes, you are approving the 2021-22 school operating budget as amended by our previous decision. If you vote no, that means that you are not in support of the budget. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Scoop up, Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right. Thank you very much. Outstanding. We will now move to item seven, which will be modified in some way, which is discussing school board members stipend at this time. Dr. Edwards?
Yep. So the forms that are in our agenda will be modified to reflect the decision that was made tonight. But I did want to just cycle back about the process of accepting, we'll say, the stipend right now. One thing that has to happen is our school board policy BHD needs to be modified. It is on the agenda for July 6, and I'm going to go back and change that up so it matches the conversation tonight. And in effect, that's just going to strike out that school board members do not receive compensation and ad language about the stipend. So you will see that on July 6 and on the work session thereafter. Therefore, it is officially approved by policy to award you a stipend by policy. But we wanted to show you in advance just the forms and talk a little bit about the collection process. So the first thing, it's real simple, and Tina will help with this, school board clerk will help with school board members just simply acknowledging, I accept, or I don't want the, I decline the salary. And then whoever the chair is, once we have the reorg meeting on July 6, can also accept or decline, and we will remove the reference to the health insurance. We're asking that all nine board members fill it out, so we have a record of what your choice and selection is, and that information will go to HR. And then the second sheet, which is actually the first sheet on this, is the confidential information sheet. HR will set you up as a, an employee, which is why they need that information, which again, once Tina collects that back, you do not have to fill that out if you are not accepting the stipend. That is only if you are choosing to accept the stipend. And then you would fill that out so that we can set you up in the system and then award the stipend on a, on a monthly basis. We also had a brief discussion with the attorney regarding the best way, should a board member say, well, I don't personally want to keep the money. I want to set it up for a scholarship. You always have the option, as do our employees, to donate to any scholarship that you would want to, any charity that you would want to. But certainly, we were in preliminary conversations with the Ed Foundation. Should board members say, I want to donate to a scholarship for, let's just say, the school board reps, you would accept it and turn around and donate it personally. It works best for auditing purposes if you accept it. Also, in the policy and in discussion, there is some language that says, please talk with your accountant or whoever manages your money regarding your choice to accept or deny, because there may be some tax consequences either way. So I, in full disclosure, just want everybody to know that going forward. But we'll talk more about this, but we wanted to put it in front of you so that you could just see what the process would be like. And then we're asking that, because when employees start the, well, no, we don't have to worry about health insurance anymore. Never mind. We're asking that they come back by August 1, so that we can set up the system appropriately.
Dr. Gupta have a question?
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Is there any need for discussion on this matter, Dr. Gupta?
For record, I'm not going to take the stipend. So I'm assuming it's a completely out, like if I say I'm out. So what happens to that money? Just like health insurance, will that money roll back to your general budget, or it stays in that part for?
It would, it would be the same as like an unfilled employee type thing, and then we would make a decision mid-year like we do, whether or not to transfer it to something else or use it to cover something else. But if you wanted it to donate to a scholarship, then you would accept it and then donate.
So if I'm not accepting it, the money stays there till mid-year, and then you'll transfer them?
Then we'll look at you.
Mr. Harvey?
My question, thank you for that clarification and the explanation, speaking with the attorney and so forth, because I also will likely decline this. I did have a question about, okay, if, if a group of the board declines that, that money stays in the personnel account, then is that a decision, it just grows, goes into the general personnel account and then gets moved, or is that in a personnel account that is earmarked for the school board, and then the school board makes the decision how that money could be spent in terms of a scholarship or something?
Well, if it's going to be for scholarship for auditing purposes, accept the, accept the money, then donate it. Because then if you don't, then we're directly contributing to the student scholarship. So that's why it's just the cleanest way, if that's what you would like to do with your funds. If you choose, I don't even want anything to do with this money. I'm going to let Ms. LaCanage talk about where it sits and then what we can do with it, or how it, what happens to it after that.
So the, it is sitting in a board compensation line, so it's in that salary line. Whoever takes it, it'll reduce the amount that's available. It would sit there by policy. If it's within the same major category, the superintendent can approve for it to go elsewhere. If, if it was being moved to a different category, it would require the board approval.
Any further discussion on the matter? And this is before us for information on tonight, and you will govern yourselves accordingly with your school board member confidential information sheet. Now moves us to item E8, discussion on date change of July the 6 school board meeting. One board member brought to my attention that in the past, we have had an opportunity around the 4th of July to make an adjustment to our July the 6 school board meeting. The said board member, it's okay if it stays as it is, but I, as chair, wanted to bring it before this embodied, because when we have our reorganizing meeting, it has always been my will, wherever I am in the process, that all nine board members be there. I have consulted administration, and we do have one matter that we have to take care of prior to July the 17, and July the 13 would be in advance of that, and all other directors and so forth would be available. Would it be pleasure of the board to move our July the 6 meeting to July the 13, if I'm giving you the right dates, or you can leave it as it is? Floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, I'll start off. I was the one that requested the change, and I'm not going to be here that week. So, you know, if the board wants to meet July 6, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, but have a good meeting. I'm going to be out of town.
So as chair, I have no problem with moving it to the 13th. Dr. Brennan?
I would just, and I'm fine with either date also. I'm just thinking that we are going to have a new board member for that meeting, who we'd probably like to meet with before the meeting occurs for an introductory sort of orientation brief meeting. And if they're appointed June 30, or sometimes it's not going to be a lot of time to meet with them, it might be nicer to have a little time for the chair and vice chair to meet with that person.
Okay. So you're in favor of the 13th?
I'd be, if the board disagrees.
Yeah, okay. Cool. Board members, keep in mind that we are scheduled on July the 15 for the Genesis meeting of the master board training, which again, is no problem for me. So we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. So far, doesn't appear that anybody is voicing any unreadiness, but please, is there anyone? Then can we entertain a motion to move our meeting from July the 6 to July the 13 for our reorg meeting?
I'll make a motion to change the organizational meeting from July 6 to July 13.
Motion made by Dr. Nillis is there, second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Senha. Any further questions or discussion? Here ain't none. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, yes to change, no to keep it as it is.
Scoop up, school board member Evans?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. F, informational items. The next finance committee has been counseled, as we heard previously, and the next school board meeting will now be Tuesday, July the 13 here at DC Glass. Thank the Glass staff for allowing us to be here. The next legislative advocacy and community relations committee meeting is scheduled for July the 13 on the same day that we are to have our 5 o'clock meeting, so we probably will need to make an adjustment on that, and we'll figure out how we would go about doing that. Master board training will be on Friday, July the 16, if that is the correct day, and it is. And the next school board meeting work session will be July the 20. All right, Mr. Harvey?
Regarding the Virginia School Board Association Master Board Training?
Yes.
On the 16th, do we have a location for that? Will that be here at?
Mr. Harvey, that is an outstanding question that you raised. We do not have an answer tonight, but we will work on that, and the board will be notified as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
We have an answer?
Of course we do.
Oh, well, we have an answer.
Yes, we will, we will be here. We need to be together in one room, so we will be in the Marie Waller Center, which allow us to spread out, but also have a screen so that we can, you can have a table and a screen for the presenters.
Ms. Morrison?
Dr. Coleman, when we set this, these dates for the master?
Yes, ma'am.
We were doing it with the?
Yes, ma'am.
Just once here, and that may change based on?
It could conceivably. And Ms. Morrison, again, raises an outstanding point, and again, one of my favorite statements, we shall see. We will see what the new board member has to say and govern ourselves accordingly. But thank you, Dr. Edwards. We do have a venue in place for the master board training here at DC Glass. All right, everybody. We will now go into item, section G1, which is a notice for closed meeting. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711A1, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matter, the superintendent's evaluation. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
A move that we go into closed meeting?
Move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion? Here ain't none. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Scoop up, Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
All right. Thank the public for coming and watching. And we will go back into the room that we were in last time, right behind us, and go right into our closed meeting. Thank everybody for your diligence tonight. Thank everybody for your diligence tonight.